Nice job. There you go.
I think we did it. I'm gonna press record. We're recording. Good to go. All right, our call to order, the town and Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for November 8th, 2023. Welcome aboard. Here we are again. I'll start off making some introductions and then we'll dive right into it. I'm William Hanley Chair. We've got Vice Chair Tracy Lottis Keller. We've got Meredith Randolph, Alan Kimerly, and Gail Marshall. And I think technically, because the Board of Selectmen, I just, I think there was just a communication snag. Haven't officially changed Gail's status from an alternate member to a full-time voting member. We should probably just cover our bases and vote Gail on as a voting member tonight.
I'll make a motion to make Gail a voting member.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, welcome aboard. Okay, everybody should know by now, out Zoom world, stay on mute, sign in on chat, so we know who's with us. What else? And let's dive right into it. So we've got the approval of minutes. We've got the the 1018 minutes. Everybody's had a chance yet to read through the dossier here, but um. Heidi, thank you. That was a lot.
A record.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 18. Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not voting.
And Gail isn't voting.
Well, I shouldn't, right?
Well, technically, yeah, so technically, let's clarify that vote. It's Meredith.
It's you three.
Us three, Meredith, Tracy, and myself, so.
Yeah.
All right. You got that.
Yep.
Let's keep steaming ahead. And of course, I forgot my reading glasses. So item three on the agenda tonight, conditional use approval application, 12, yes.
Does that help?
Maybe. Negative.
Do you need one?
Uh, mine are like three and a half. Yeah. I am. But thank you. So we've got conditional use approval application 12, 2023. Owner is the Mount Desert Land and Garden Preserve. Agent is Noel Musson. The Musson Group location is 257 Peabody Drive, Seal Harbor. Tax map three, lot 15, residential two is the zone. In the purposes, section 3.4, office building. Renovate existing office building, construct new additions, services three, not wholly enclosed, reconstruct existing maintenance buildings which consist of carpentry shop, paint shop, mechanic shop, et cetera. We had a site inspection at four o'clock. And were the butters notified in this one advertised?
There were six of the butters notified by letter dated October 24th, 2023. And the advertisement was in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, October 23rd. I mean, October 26th, 2023.
Thank you. So any conflict of interest on this one? None heard? Gail, would you care to report on the site visit today at four o'clock?
Alan was also there.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's very clearly as stated in the plans that we have before us, these buildings, the existing buildings are all obviously old and either in need of replacement or repair. Um, the office building has kind of a bit of history to it, which is interesting. And they're going to make their, and they're going to, I think considerable effort to maintain that building and expand by adding onto it behind it, behind it, meaning as related to the road. Um, they intend to maintain a wooded buffer between the, what will be the new maintenance facility between that and the road. Um, the maintenance building will be actually slightly smaller. The parking spaces will be more clearly managed and provided for and updated. There's another entire building that's going to be removed. And my understanding is that this is all also integrated into the project that was discussed at prior planning, but I mean, up at the what I told you earlier, I always think of as the pit. And it it seemed like something that was long overdue. And reasonable relative to what they described it as.
Alan, anything to add? Oh, no, I concur with everything was said, and the buildings are in need of being replaced. So, all right. Well, Noel, I'll turn it over to you then.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the project tonight. Again, my name is Noel Musson. I'm representing the Land and Garden Preserve on this application. We are also joined on the Zoom by Matthew Baird, Jen, and Teresa from Matthew's Office are there. We are talking with Rodney and Jesse there from the Land and Garden Preserve to answer a lot of questions that I'm sure I'll breeze over and they'll be able to fill in the details. Uh, the reason why we're here tonight again is to try to get conditional use approval for uh, the project that the Land and Garden Preserve wants to do. I think Rodney's gonna be able to give a little bit of that background, and Matthew will be able to articulate the plans a little bit better than I would be able to do. So we have a short presentation. Uh, you want to point out, yeah, when we were back here in March, I think it was, that we asked the planning board what determination was, and that was, I think, office and services three, which is what it says on the agenda, to just to encompass what the existing uses are on the property, and then those uses are gonna be the same after the project as they are today. So we're just trying to consolidate one building and make the site more modern and more energy efficient and more useful and functional for the preserve. Um, while Rodney's talking, giving you a little bit of background, I may have a couple of handouts that are just sort of updates to the plans as we go through, but I think it might be helpful to give you the first plan while Rodney's talking because Matthew will probably be talking about it. And the only thing I wanted to point out that's a slight difference on this plan is that there is a proposed easement with the adjacent property owner, Finley Matheson, to help facilitate site distances for the new entrances that were that were shown. So that's a, just this point, there's still an easement line on that, that side. It gives a fence that goes along the property, this property too, to help with screening, but we'll have to come back to that because we don't have that. So those things are indicated on the plan that you have already in the packet and on this one that I'm gonna hand out. Just for your reference, the other plans that we have are a little more detailed on the landscaping process or thought, and then lighting photometrics, and you can see that the light risk test doesn't get beyond one foot, 21 foot candle or whatever standard is. So Rodney, I'll turn it over to you, and then Matt.
Thank you, Noel. I'm Rodney, CEO of the Land and Garden Preserve. And there in the slide that Jen pulled up, you can see that the preserve encompasses from the attitude of the garden, the studio, a little on, on the aviary, Rockefeller Garden, and also roughly 200 acres between Day Mountain and Hunter's Cliff. Now, many people know that's the preserve, but it also encompasses that land as well. So when I started in 2015, the preserve was about 140 acres, and thanks to the generosity of David Rockefeller and his forethought to preserve this land, the preserve is now 1,400 acres stretching from Northeast Harbor to Seal Harbor. In 2021, we undertook an 11-month master plan. It was a comprehensive master plan. And because we knew that with the enormity of the site, and we increased the capacity, we currently we estimate that we receive about 110 to 120,000 visitors a year between all of our different sites, that we needed more staff, we needed more operations. And the master plan showed that where we're, as you saw, that where we're lacking is in modern and efficient workspaces. Um, we've got staff working all over the place, and some are working remotely, not by choice, but because there's nowhere for them to actually have a desk on site. So the master plan identified that the top priority is for a centralized workspace at this, at the Green Rock location, which would house administration, facilities, and natural lands all in one location.
So Matthew, you want to jump in here?
Oh, sure. Can everyone hear us okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're going to buzz through this quickly, so as not to keep folks longer than than you'd like, but if we're going too fast, just stop us and we can answer any questions along the way. Um, we're looking here at a survey from 1961. Um, and this is just setting out what you saw essentially this afternoon. No changes really since then. Um, this parcel of land has been used by the Rockefeller family going back to really the turn of the 20th century when the carriage roads were first constructed. And the office building was where the engineers drew up many of the bridges that we all love as a part of the Carriage Trail system. And the garage was used for vehicle storage and various material storage for maintaining those carriage roads and the natural lands that are now a part of the preserve. And then, of course, there's a carpentry shop and a paint shop that also was used over the years for signage creation and maintenance. I think we can probably go to the next. We have an aerial view here today, just showing you what was in the survey. You can see the existing office that we're restoring faithfully. Um, and the garage shop is to be demolished. It's a great building, but it's beyond its useful life and has no insulation and is largely unconditioned. We'll replace that with a building that will show you that will be smaller but fully conditioned. Uh, we have, there's a fuel tank currently on the site that will be removed. And there's an existing shop that has, as I mentioned, carpentry and paint that will be consolidated into the new garage building, and that building will be demolished. Uh, just sharing with you our detailed survey from Herrick, sending out the utilities on the site and uh, the buildings that we just saw in the aerial view. I think we can move through this. And our site plan, we tried to locate the the new shop, you know, in the middle of the site to be well, well within any setbacks, where, as you can see, we're quite far from any setbacks. We've also introduced a new driveway entrance. One of the challenges of the existing site is that 18-wheel trucks have to turn around in a one one entrance-only configuration, which leads to backing up 18-wheelers, often having a flag out on the street, out on Peabody Drive to back trucks in. This will be a great improvement and also much safer. So we're introducing a new curb cut you can see on the right-hand side. And you can see the shop, the new shop, slightly smaller footprint than the existing, and you can see the addition that we're making on the uh, on the office building, small addition. Uh, in total, our building footprint will be slightly smaller than what is currently on the site, but it will be all-conditioned space. Uh, so a little more heated footprint, but the good news is we're making all of that with an electric system that will be fully powered by a very large solar array on the roof of the shop to achieve a net zero installation. Um, and I don't know if Noel, you'd like to talk a little bit about the zoning compliance? We're fully compliant. Um, but we could go through the details of exactly how that works, if you'd like.
Sure. I don't know if you want to go through this now, board, but on the plan that I just handed out, up there in that lower right-hand corner, we have summarized all the dimensional requirements, et cetera, obviously setbacks and whatnot. So lock coverage requirements, building heights, and those, those type of things. You can see that the existing lock coverage is a little less, is a little more than what the proposed lock coverage is gonna be in that ability height. It's planned to be lower than the required, or the maximum height restriction. Setbacks are shown on the plan. Okay, that's, that's good, Matthew.
I think that's good. Okay. Let's go to the next.
Sorry, can we go back to that one more time, just again, to point out uh, the difference from what might be in your packet in this plan is that upper right-hand corner shows the easement area, which is gonna help with the site distances. We can get into more detail of that, but essentially, when they do the entrance permit, once we get through this process, we're fine, we're in the process of finalizing the entrance, the easement with the adjacent property owner, then we can go to the DOT. Once we have this plan approved, we'll go to the DOT to get the entrance permit approved. We've already met with them, so we kind of know what we need to do, and then we'll um, go into the construction permit.
And I should add that the adjacent property owner, Finley Matheson, have volunteered this idea of a proposed view easement so that in the future, the Land and Garden Preserve can maintain that sightline, so that as you're pulling out, you'll have a good, a clear view to the Seal Harbor side. Um, and the concern was that if vegetation grew up there, it would be a harder exit to make, but we're we're moving ahead with that.
We have larger plans of this plan when we need it, so. Carry on.
Okay, looking at our civil plan, I don't know if Noel, you want to mention the compliance with the wetlands? We are disturbing.
Sure, yeah, you can see on the plan, we did a wetland delineation on the plan. There's a small wetland pocket out there. We saw it at the site visit today. It is pretty wet today. Um, the new driveway access is gonna go through that wetland. It's around 2,000 square feet of impact, maybe a little less than that, which is less than what would be required for any EEP permitting.
Which plan is that on?
Uh, well, you can see it's in the application, but it's shown on the, what plane, let's see. Five, maybe?
It's seafood.
Sorry.
The site utility plan.
It's in the, in the documents. It's in a couple of the different. Yep.
Oh, Noel, just adding to that, a couple of other things shown on this plan um, relative to the, the new proposed driveways will be relocating a fire hydrant slightly west. And then there's a couple of telephone or utility poles that will need to relocate. So that's also shown on this plan. And then, as mentioned previously, you can see on this plan the overlay of the existing buildings with the new, in the existing being gray, so you can kind of visually see the relationship there.
I think that's probably good on the civil.
I mean, if you want to hit all the details now, it's really up to you guys, but you can also see that we're, we're just, we have the existing sewer pipes just to go around the addition. Right now, we go underneath the addition. Whatever other, a few other things.
I'd say just keep rolling along.
And see that one wetland, just because it's a, I mean, wooded areas.
Uh, I think actually some drainage comes from, from other parts of the property to there, and it might be a lower point. That's what it is.
Come, come across the world a little more.
There's a ditch right there that we're gonna have to move. It might be, and it's, it's heavy on the Finley side, a little bit higher elevation wise. And it's pretty wet behind the building. You can actually see it on this plan behind the existing building.
It's the blue dash line. I haven't seen anything saying that's wetland, but I.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it kind of looks like it's all coming from the culvert.
Yeah. Seems like that's where the drainage hole ends up.
Okay, I think we can go to the photometric plan. Um, this is simply demonstrating the compliance with site photometrics and dark sky requirements. And has been submitted to assure you that we're compliant. We've shown the fixtures here. If, if anyone wants us to walk through it, we can. Uh, but we've tried to illustrate where the light will be on the site.
I had that kind of going down when we get to that section. Keep going.
Okay. So the, the concept here was to try to minimize our impervious surfaces in the site layout, and you can see the darker gray is asphalt. Uh, and then the parking areas, most of the parking areas, except for the front parking, will be gravel, just to reduce runoff and try to be as absorptive as we can with our, our landscape plan.
There's also a little strip of concrete right in front of the building for maintenance purposes. And, um, you know, as, as discussed before, there's a really nice vegetal buffer in between the Peabody and the the buildings, and that's really been what's driving kind of our landscape strategy to really preserve that and supplement it.
Most folks don't even know that this is Green Rock, and it's nice that it's hidden in the woods, and we're trying to keep it that way.
And over towards the east side of the site, which is planned right, you can see a dark one, and this is a fence that we'll be building to help provide screening for the neighbor to the east, and there will also be some additional plantings there, native plantings to kind of fill in underneath the existing mature trees that will remain.
Um, we also, you're seeing the buildings here and the solar panels that I mentioned, were super insulating, so that these will be very efficient buildings. And as I mentioned before, we're running all-electric heat and cooling, which will be, that energy will be supplied by this larger array of solar panels.
And additionally, Land and Garden Preserve has decided to do a noise mitigation study, which is voluntary. And the purpose of that being to really think through strategies to minimize the physical impact of the site during construction and in operation on the surrounding landowners.
I think the only other thing we might offer on this plan is you'll notice there's a slight difference to the parking layout here than that, which was submitted by the civil engineers. Um, and this was a sort of late-breaking design improvement, we think. We, we want to try to preserve that thicket of trees that Jen is circling now. Um, and we realized that our parking layout was actually causing us to take down some pretty beautiful mature pines. So we're, we're proposing to take out those spaces, keep the trees as they are, and keep the original parking, which is just north of the trees. And we've also changed in the back of the lot, some of the parking distribution between the curved area and the longer straight area.
In total, it nets out, where this scheme would accommodate 28 spaces in total across the site, and that's what's shown in the civil and previous architectural site plan, is that what you saw a few moments ago?
Um, our hope was that we might, in, in requesting conditional approval, that, that we might be able to supplement, that the, the approval could be made, subject to us supplementing that revised parking layout, but we were unable to, to turn the documents around quick enough to get them in front of you. Same number of parking spaces, just slightly different layout. And then we, we have some, just some views of the proposed new work. You can see the restored building in the foreground. Um, the trees are drawn in white here. We've taken out for clarity, so you can see the three dimension. Um, but the architecture will be natural weathering wood with standing seam roof, and hopefully, these will not be too obtrusive from the road, and they'll weather in nicely. And then a view of the new addition to the engineering building. We have a summer, a spring entrance into the connector that is running between the two gables. And then in the winter, we have a smaller door as we'll close off some of the glass for efficiency in the colder temps. And then the new garage, you can see the large solar array that produces all the electricity we will need and a little bit more for the site. And I think that's it.
Uh, that's just a high-level overview of what we're planning, and I think it's now happy to answer questions.
All right, well, thanks, Noel. Thanks, Matthew and team. I guess I'll open it up to any public comments.
Hi, it's Ann Ogilvy. May I make, ask a question?
Please do.
Um, I, let me just say, first of all, I want to say what a supporter I am of the Land and Garden Preserve. I think they're terrific. I think this is a needed project. I'm all in favor of it. My one request is, as the board thinks about granting the approval, could we make it conditioned on ensuring that there is adequate vegetative buffer on the south side as well as the east side? Because those new parking spaces are going to be very close to the little cottages right across the boundary there in the sort of trapezoid area to the south.
Absolutely, we can do that, and, and there, we are not encroaching in, except for the five spaces that you see in, in sort of center of the plan. Um, the, the, the rest of the parking is in the footprint of the old shop building, so that shouldn't be any different. Um, and certainly at the, the five spaces in the middle, we can make sure that we have a, a green buffer, so that folks in those cottages won't be looking at cars.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. Could I ask just one more thing out of curiosity? How many 18-wheeler trips a day are you anticipating?
Uh, I think it's more, how many per, per year? Um, we have a, a, occasionally, there's forces delivered to the pasture that you see by the office building, and then occasionally there are big material deliveries, but I might let Jesse answer that. Uh, he knows better than I how many trucks per year. Pretty few.
Yeah, I think it's better to think of it in trucks per year, because it's, you know, it's every other week, everyone, we have a truck come in for greenhouse supplies, but it's, it's very minimal. Everyone, we have a truck come in for, uh, greenhouse supplies, but it's, uh, it's very minimal. It's more like U E S and. And all that.
Sure, okay, thank you, that's very helpful, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I I have a question.
No, go for it, Mr. Bleggy.
Thank you, nice, nice to see everybody, uh, I'm Daniel Palyga, I represent Finley Matheson, I just have, uh, one question. Um, a- about the plan, how, if at all, will the, um, the new road and the, um. Paving affect stormwater runoff onto the Matheson lot?
Um, it's, well, I I'll take a, a wager at that, it shouldn't affect, uh, stormwater runoff at all. Because it's downhill, uh, from the, um, from, uh, Finley's lot. Um, and, um. Yeah, so, so there will be runoff from Finley's lot down the hill to the asphalt. Uh, from there, it's handled, uh, by drains and and, uh, catch spaces, uh, drawn by the civil.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, just to supplement that, um. And there we have the Sewell has, Sewell's the engineer, they've already done a grading and erosion control plan, which addresses the stormwater runoff. Um, either through structure or through grading and and buffering.
Great, thanks again.
Yep.
All right, any other comments, questions from the public? Going once. Twice. All right, I'm gonna close public comment and let's, um.
Do we need a vote for to use the short form?
Oh, we will definitely need a vote to use the short form and, um. Let's first, uh, get a vote on the table to find the application complete.
I'll make a motion to find the application complete.
I'm Tracy Keller, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, uh, I opposed.
Um, you want the approval of the application or do you want the?
Uh, let's, let's do the short form.
Okay, I'll make a motion to use the short form.
Tracy Keller, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, uh, I oppose, short form it is. And then we do our weird little procedural thing and is there a motion to approve the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, second.
And then we press the pause button and we go through the review of the application. So I've got the application before me, I've got the short form checklist. I've got Noel's supplemental drawing as well. Let's, let's do it. All right. In one of my favorite sections, section six A one compatibility. Uh, let's see, physical size, so they're, they're talking about the history and, um. The proposed renovation construction of the Green Rock property, it's been in use since the twenties. Um, they talk about the office building and still in scale with the other structures. And that the existing structure is allowing, uh, Land and Garden Preserve to combine uses. Visual impact, the applicant talks about, it's a renovation construction of existing facilities. Again, the scale, architecture and scale of the buildings is in character with the traditional uses of the property. Proximity to other structures, it's not going to change the proximity to other structures in the district. Density of development, the project is renovation reconstruction, existing facilities, and it's not changing the density of development. So I would say for six A one compatibility, C application. And then we go on to six A two erosion and sedimentation control. Uh, African says that the project will employ erosion and sedentation controls as needed. See sheet C five and the attached site plans, and that's exhibit three. So it's C application. Six A three highway safety. Uh, here they're talking about, again, it's a renovation reconstruction of an existing use. It's not adding any congestion or unsafe conditions. And that the, um. They're also creating the new entrance on Peabody Drive. Uh, and then the relative to off-street parking, it's gonna include reconstruction vehicular circulation. And again, references exhibit three for the parking and site layout. To see application, six A four, impact on town services. So renovation reconstruction, there's no increased use of any town services.
So can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, just, uh, well, I guess I just been noticing that you're adding an entrance into the Harbor Club?
Nope, the, there's an existing entrance there, it's informal, and I think it is a right of way going through there. Um, and so we're just maintaining that right of way, so it's there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't really see it on the.
That's on.
It's actually probably shown on.
Oh, I see.
It's on the supplemental, and you just gave us.
It's also on, um, C three. You, it might not show up very well, so starting with C.
I just was surprised.
Site visit, we started on the face of the earth.
Something, uh, trailer ready to hang out, yeah.
Is it mostly for utility or just so people can go swimming?
At least on use, I think the Harbor Club often parks a vehicle there in the summer for their staff, but it's, it's just that we've kind of been there as a game.
Okay.
It's probably a function of, uh, past connection to property.
Alrighty. So land suitability.
We did not have a fine which.
Uh, impact, uh, six A four, impact on town services is C application. Thanks, six A five land suitability. It's a renovation reconstruction project, uh. Development associated with the project is in ways where existing structures are already located. And it says, see exhibit seven for additional soils information. So six A five's the application. Six A six, lighting outdoor. I mean, that's the supplement Noel.
Yeah, right here, so, um, that's, Matthew just went over this, but this is the photometrics just showing. Uh, we have submitted the lighting. Style, so you can see, uh. Dark sky compliant, and this is just an indicator of, um, light trespass, not exceeding.
Right, and then just the application says the exterior lighting on the building's pass will be minimal, lighting proposed by. Full cutoff dark sky confined minimized light trespass, see exhibit six in the. Handout of today, so. See application. Six A seven, stormwater. You have a stormwater management again, um.
Yeah, there's a stormwater erosion control plan, um, six A, I mean, exhibit three, sheets four, D one has the, um. The detail sheets for different.
It's a C application. Six A eight vegetation. Uh, Captain says vegetation removal is associated with the permitted uses.
Yes, we also have, uh, the supplemental that. Matthew just went over in terms of the landscape plan, um, I actually wrote on my copy the comment about the vegetated buffer. Here or here. And I think it's important to point out that the, um, whole intent of the major intent of the vegetation of the, um, landscape plan. As Matthew mentioned was, you know, it's, it's important to the board also to maintain, uh, the existing natural buffering. Particularly along here, but wherever possible, so really trying to minimize any tree removal and really just supplementing. Um, vegetation and screening, uh, with the fence.
Okay, so. See application. Got a question, Meredith? Six A nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases, uh, it says construction specifications will address any temporary conditions. Created from construction activities.
Uh, if it helps, also exhibit three, plan C five does have specifications for during construction. Uh, dealing with dust and other construction stuff.
The application. All right, so the findings are, the findings of factor is presented by the applicant. And the attached application, and the conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A. For which the standards have been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
All right, all those in favor, uh, I opposed. All right, now this section six A under six B. So I would wager a lot of these are N A such as six B one agriculture. N A, six B two. Air landing sites. It says reserved in the luso and it says air landing sites on my. We gotta talk to somebody about that. So N A, six B seven excavation. And African talks about filling and excavation is associated with the proposed project. Erosion sedimentation control specs are in exhibit three, sheet C five. So. See application. Six B eight fences and walls.
To be continued.
Yes.
And we're, but we're in on the plan, we're committed to one, but we are aware that we'll have to come back to get.
For that, so the fence is proposed to help screen the.
And then you all have to come back where.
Well, we'll still need to get a permit.
But yeah, but you won't be that afraid unless.
And just. Noel, to point out six B eight fences and walls, you don't have anything checked in the application. But I would wager it's. Applicable standard net. But with the condition that you're, you'll come back if you need to.
We're intending to put a fence in, and we're going to have to get a permit for it.
Okay, so. See application, and Ken, do you want them to check? All right. All right, six B, and then it jumps from six B eight to six B sixteen. Sign regulations, N A, there are no signs. And it jumps to six B eighteen wireless communication facilities, you're not proposing any cell towers. And a. Six B nineteen on the checklist is animal husbandry two. So N A. Six B twenty on the checks, checklist is mobile food vendors, N A. Six B twenty one is rooming house, N A. And six B twenty two. Hotels and motels, N A. So the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B. Except for. Six B seven and six B eight. And the conclusion was that section six B is not applicable, except for section six B seven and six B eight, which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor, uh, I opposed. Six C shoreline zoning for shoreline zoning standards for review. Noel, if I'm not mistaken, you're not in the shoreline zone.
You are not mistaken.
Okay, because you are in the R two district. So. That simplifies things, um. So the findings of fact, the pro- proposed use is entirely outside the shoreline zone. And the conclusion was that section sixty is not applicable.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, uh, I opposed. So then we don't have to do section five nine, because you're not in the shoreline zone. And then we go back, are there any permit conditions on this?
There, there was a request for the vegetation buffering. And then.
Yeah.
And then we should just make a permit condition to get a permit for the fence, just to clarify that we're not. Okaying the fence.
I think that, thanks to the list.
Yeah.
We're committed to do that, so that's fine, if you want to say, you know, adding vegetation. What degree, we want to specify that, but we're, I think we're, we love growing the place. If there's medical buffering, uh, between the new, uh, parking and the, um. Uh, where's it, the southern side of the property, uh, by the, by the, uh, one. Number two is, uh, I don't know if you need to condition this or not, but we do need an entrance permit and we wouldn't. To, um, get a building permit until we get the entrance permit. But we can't get the entrance permit, there's no sense to get the entrance permit until we have this approval, so. That's the, that process and then.
Can you talk about the wetland impact, if that was?
There is no permit required for the wetland impact.
Because.
Because there is, all, you are allowed to disturb, uh, to fill in, uh, a certain amount of wetland on your property.
Yeah, so we had. Vegetated buffer, the DOT permit.
And then I don't think that you need to do this, but as Matthew mentioned. Um, we're, oh, we're only proposing twenty eight parking spaces. But we may want to rejigger the layout of the parking spaces from the plan that's there to be closer to the plan. That is reflected in the landscape plan, which I just couldn't get around.
It doesn't really feel like a permit condition.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, how do you phrase that? No.
I guess I would, just thought we should mention it because they brought it up and that we don't know what it is, so it isn't. They aren't really getting, that it clarifies that the, the permit for that isn't here.
But if it's on the six B, it doesn't need to be.
Right, but to me, it still needs to get a permit from you.
It will, yeah, they'll have.
So it just would be a condition to clarify that you're not giving him the permit for that, that he plans to get that complete. It's just a thing, it's not in this, it's not in this.
I just think it's unnecessary.
You guys think it's unnecessary or you want to condition it? I don't think we need to condition it yet, because we haven't seen anything.
No, yeah, because we don't have any details to.
Well, that's why I was saying the clarification. It's just that it's referenced and therefore it's saying, this is, the permit for this isn't in this application, so you. We're not letting them out of getting a permit, so you're just saying it's.
But they may come back and design a four foot fence and.
And they still have to go to Kim to get the permit to build the four foot fence. And they still have to go to Kim to get the permit to build the four foot fence. Oh, if it's a four foot fence, I thought they always it was a structure and they have to get a permit. Well, that's why you're so.
I think we're demonstrating that we're committing to build a fence in the area that we're showing. As we've been discussing with the adjacent property owner. The design of that fence is yet to be determined. We will come back and get the appropriate permit if necessary. Either it's a planning board if it's over a certain height or a Z E O permit or no permit, but we're going to get a fence.
I think that.
We just showed on.
That clarification is enough. For. It being on record. So what permit conditions do we have Heidi?
I have the vegetation will be added to ensure buffering on the southern side of the property. And uh, an entrance permit from the DOT is required.
Okay. So then we go back to our A track player and for us.
I would specify the five spaces for us. Some revegetation, not follow the south law line.
Good point.
Good point.
But for the the parking.
I think it's seven where you're actually.
And is, if I answer question about that, is is our zoning ordinance require them to do that screening? If somebody asked for it, so therefore it's appropriate for us to make their condition? I mean, it's.
I think, I don't think that we're telling that that is a technical review criteria of section six A, B or C. But where we have a concern to bother asking for it, I think it's just good form.
Uh, so it's in the record.
Yeah. And they're willing and applicants willing to do it. All good. Press play.
Press.
Alright, back to the vote of approval. All those in favor of of approving the application with the. Attached permit conditions.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's, you know, and I can't believe it, but we're actually all here to sign. You're playing your binder back?
Yeah.
Can I keep the clip?
Yes, you take whatever you want some paper to start.
Hold on, yeah, I'm I'm.
Okay, we're gonna sign off. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
I don't think I messed up the device there, go.
Alright, but. Checklist is going in the folder. Alrighty, Kim, I think. We're on to other.
Well, before these guys leave, we should do the. The.
The workshop. You wanted to. Schedule a workshop now or?
I don't have, I don't have application. We were just talking about scheduling an actual workshop to do for that. I actually have.
Hi, Rodney.
See ya.
So I would like to schedule now. I'd like to see you down, see you later. Yeah, thank you everybody.
See ya.
Phones up. I think we should. Maybe do it. I don't have it now.
Do you wanna pick your pick over dates and then?
Then I'll let you know if it works.
Yeah. So.
Is the fifteenth too soon?
Fifteenth?
Of this one?
Yeah.
Uh, it is for me cuz I have a. Another meeting that night. Is Wednesday, is that the day that we have to do?
No.
Do we have a meeting on the twenty second anyway?
I mean, no.
Okay, it's November. And it's November. I know, I was like, that's awfully close to it. Oh, that's actually the night. There was a meeting on the twenty first.
Mm hmm. What about the twenty ninth?
Do you, is the twenty first? We could do it right after the Luso meeting.
Or before. But it'd be helpful to have it before though.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, it's the chair's birthday.
It doesn't even, it doesn't work for Phil anyways.
What's that?
What's your favorite cake flavor?
One.
Yeah. Mondays are usually.
Back to that meetings.
Heck, yeah. Kim, I have a meeting every night next week, so. Let's do this then.
Or the sixteenth.
That doesn't work.
Okay.
Actually, no, the sixteenth would work.
Trying to give Kim options.
I would love if it's not on a Tuesday or Thursday.
Sixteen, when I try the sixteenth or the twentieth?
Sixteenth or the twentieth?
When are when are the board of selectmen's meetings? Mondays?
Yeah, Monday, Sunday.
So. Yeah.
And so that's not on the work.
How about, I'm happy.
Unless you wanna meet at five.
What about the twenty ninth Wednesday?
Do it. I don't have a meeting that night. Yeah.
Okay, what time are we doing it on the?
Well, we will fix that.
So the sixteenth or the twenty ninth?
I would, I think it would be great to do the sixteenth just because it would, it would be helpful to get the feedback stream. But happy to do the twenty ninth.
Bill was grumbling about Tuesdays or Thursdays.
Oh, let's do this. If the twenty ninth works, let's do that.
Sixteenth of the twenty ninth?
We're shooting for the sixteen, uh, the twenty ninth, but the sixteenth will be the.
And what what are we calling this? Planning board workshop?
So, so.
Are we doing six o'clock or are we gonna do earlier? Later?
So I gotta put notification in the major.
I'd like six o'clock, please.
Sixteen won't give me enough time to put it in the bag.
Alright.
Oh, there you go.
Twenty nine?
Yep.
And just so we can be clear, what is it that you would like board members to have? Certainly you for the meeting.
Um, so. Uh, here's what I would think would be helpful on the agenda. Save this before I get into something. Uh, the first thing is we're having a whole rewrite of the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
So. Read the subdivision ordinance and think about how the draft works. In your mind, based on your very recent experience going through a subdivision. And what in this draft? What I've done is taken. Like. I've taken the cluster provision and made it its own thing. And there's a workforce provision, which is its own thing. There are two separate sections. The workforce provision is written as a current draft is written to be compliant with. The new state law L D two thousand three, which if you're not familiar with is is a lot to do with uh additional housing benefits. So there's some other things that probably I think about related to that, but that that's sort of the format. And so this this format of this subdivision ordinance is is um. The first section in in terms of the standards, it deals with um. This state statute standards, and then there's like additional standards, which are kind of more specific usually to the local thing. So I could, did you go and talk to the public works and make sure that you have? You know, letters from them and some of those other things. That's sort of the standards section. And then before that would be the, you know, the procedural stuff, so. We we wanna talk about how we feel about making sure that we have a uh a voluntary or required. Um. Sketch plan review. Um. And then, you know, preliminary plan and. Or, you know, however you might call it. So we just wanna work on terminology. It's basically the same three step process, but we have a different.
We say it's a three step process, but it seems like there's two. Um. There's always two things kind of happening at once in the final stage of the project. Process.
Yep.
That's something that's always confused me.
It is, yeah, cuz you're doing a public hearing and or to approval at the same time, yeah. So it's, it could be a forced thing to us. That's where you do your, you know, sketch plan. Completeness review, public hearing and whatever. Sometimes in my mind, also it kind of makes sense to do your completeness in public hearing like very much.
I think the public gets confused about that.
Yeah. When you're doing completeness in the public.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so we should just like kind of talk about that. But it's a pretty standard. Model. It's not, it's just better than the one that we have. We can start to work on tweaking it out, but I think you're. Gonna be able to weigh in on it better than the Luso committee since you just went through it. And what we'll be working on to Luso is more like, can the land, the land use ordinance needs to be compliant with L D two thousand three, so should we do? You know, what do we need to tweak? In the ordinance to make sure that there's no single family zoning, or do we need to make sure that even?
I mean, we need to understand L D two thousand three too. We haven't really parsed that.
Yeah, we can talk about that too. Um.
Would be asked too much to ask you to sort of. Send an email to planning board members. With links to the. Things that would help.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
And and. To go over some stuff that we've already talked about, just to kind of, I don't know, some other Luso tweaks. Um. And I'd also like to add. The idea of a, if like an employee living quarters. Type thing, shared accommodations or employee living quarters in the in the same similar style as Bar Harbor, but. You know, tailored to here because. I think there's a need for. Another housing style that can help address. You know, worker workforce, seasonal help or working help. Uh, without having to have employees like buy. You know, houses, if you if you could build. Um. You know, your own place, why not do that? Yeah. There's a lot. It's quite a bit actually coming up.
It still feels pretty fresh.
Well, the subdivision, I think, is really important to get. Now, because you just went through one that was very rigorous.
Mm hmm.
And it would, it's even better to do it now because it was so rigorous, because now we can really think about, right, here's what. Here's what would have worked better if we had had a better ordinance. Rather than, you know, if it was an easy subdivision, that'd be fine. We'd still be going through a process, but it wouldn't have been the same like.
Mm hmm.
We've just done the same thing that we normally do and just kind of gotten through it, but this one. Was tough.
It was a different scenario too, so kind of added information or understanding to the subdivision that we didn't.
Yes.
Had had that.
Yeah, so I just think it was helpful. I mean, I've been through a bunch and it was really helpful for me to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, is there? Improvements to the delineation between a normal subdivision and a non. Land division subdivision?
I think that it's in there. What I, I mean, we. I'll have to go back and look. I can't remember how that's addressed. I think it's a little less, it's not as like. Explicit. I think what you should, what we really would wanna do is say, if you do a, there's a way to um tweak your ordinances a little bit so that. When you're doing like a non land subdivision, it's more like a site plan review and not a subdivision review, cuz those are kind of clunky. When it comes to non land divisions. Like if you were reviewing an apartment building, for example, that's a subdivision. Cuz it's by lease or development, the number of units. But it really should be a site plan review because all you really care about is. You know, the parking and their how, where are you doing lights, things like that, that you're not thinking about when you do a. When we do a land subdivision, the land subdivision is more about. The road and the access and are you uh using wells or sewer systems and they're using. Septic, you know, do you have adequate?
Exactly.
Or you, or even those things that you have to.
I would wager we're probably gonna be seeing more of those than we are seeing normal. Land subdivisions in town.
I think probably that's true, and what you may end up seeing more is like infill subdivisions because. That's where you want the development to be. Because it's already served by water and sewer. And it's more cost effective sometimes. But the land subdivisions are, I think. Probably gonna happen too.
Yeah.
But I think it's, I've said this for a few years, I think site plan review ordinance would be. Very helpful. If this, this project.
I, I would, I would say that we have seen more site plan review-ish. Applications before the board in the last couple of years than we've seen actual subdivision.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yep, like uh the the. College that project, uh, that would have been a really. Probably a better, I mean, if you were or M D three sixty five office, that would have been a site interview.
Yeah, there.
You know, cuz the standards would have been like, alright, where's your landscaping? All that good stuff.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. The other thing that I was thinking about the other day is um. With the subdivision ordinance, thinking about like that whole open space requirement. And so the reason like the tie in for this one. The the last plan that we went through was that there's a, there's this weird open space section, and then there's like that cluster and workforce housing section. So we've separated in the new draft, I've separated the two because you should be able to think about a cluster development that isn't workforce. Or you should be able to do, you could layer them on top of each other. That's, I mean, I think, as you know, that's the way it's. Currently allowed to do it, but I think it's just more clean to separate them.
We got lost a long time because they were together. And everybody thought cluster was an approach to making. It more affordable rather than just. Preserving more land.
Right, I, in my mind, the intent of a cluster provision is really more to preserve. Larger areas of undeveloped land and it is to promote affordability. They're less expensive sometimes because you don't have to build such a long road. So you could also do a cluster development that is like. Has a long road and you're just clustering smaller lots, but piecing together your open space cuz it makes more sense.
I was thinking of the Acadian farm as you drive to. Harvard, that they put a bunch of houses together and then they had this vast field. And that would have been, I was like, that's an example. Those are expensive houses. And they were all. You know. Partaking in it, in the expensive views and there was nothing. Working towards affordability was preserving the land and beauty by clustering.
That's the whole point of a cluster development, to preserve uh open space. And then I think it's, you know, when you're making evaluations, cuz you're gonna get more projects in village areas. So when you're making evaluations to that, to those projects, like you're, what you're considering. For open space isn't the same as if you were doing a cluster development where your intent is to preserve large chunks of land. Now, you're starting to think like, okay. What's around the area that provides the similar opportunities or is it a big enough piece of property or big enough development that you wanna add like a pocket park? Or make sure you have a little playground that, because. You could actually in other places, this happens where you ask the developer to do. An analysis of the recreational opportunities in the area, and then you could say, are they overburdened already? And if they are. And that's a need for the project, you know, you could require more of that. And I don't think we've really addressed that very well in the current draft, but it's like the same thing, like why? Require open space in a. Urban, like a downtown or a village scenario.
Mm hmm.
In the same way that you're requiring open space like Allen Beach Road or something. So I think it's trying to figure out how to give you guys the tool, how to give the applicant the information. That you need to. You know, ask for the information that you need and then be able to have a set of standards that.
I think you're gonna have, that sort of sounds like a, a different. Criteria for certain zones, you know, in-town zoning should actually have its own requirements as opposed to rural.
Yeah, I think it's something to that effect, yeah. We may not get it right, right off the bat. Yeah, but I think that's something we should do. And the other part, the other thing I would love to do is. Rewrite or get rid of, or some somehow get rid of six A one. I just don't know how to do it yet. Like what really matters from those standards and how do you make them standards? And I know we've, we've stood on this for years. It's probably part of the reason why we haven't, we're taking it out yet is because I, I don't, I don't know. I hate that standard. I just don't know how that.
Can't you quantify or word it to?
I don't know.
Make it more quantifiable and.
I think the density is, it's already quantified in the words. Be like, you've got a comprehensive plan that said, this is what we want in these areas. We have an ordinance that theoretically reflects that.
You understand.
And it's already there.
But then you've got like this qualitative statement of. Compatibility in the description of six A one, so I mean, why isn't that like more? In tune with the quantified criteria that you're.
Right, well, I guess that's what I'm saying is the quantification, the quantity, you already have those standards.
Yeah.
So you don't need six A one because you have a den, you have lots, minimum lot area density requirements. You have setback requirements which tell you what, how close you could be to buildings. You have those standards in the ordinance, so you don't need to second guess those standards. In its objective way, you just need to say.
I guess I. It is vague, but I guess I feel like, as I've said many times, that a lot of. The value of the planning board is to bring the community together and have an opportunity to discuss things. And most of the time, when we go through that, if people like. The person who got on today and said, can you make sure you put some plants there? And everyone says, yeah, okay.
Yep.
And if we don't have. Uh, a category where there's, it's not just simply follow the rules, that there's an opportunity to say. Do it, does it, is it, that it's muddy like that? Then people can come forward and say, I don't like the way that looks, or what about, you know, try not to make that such an eyesore to. From my house, you know, and stuff like that, that, that it just ends up within, in. Um, in such trouble when you just simply have people who just don't want it to happen. And so they dig into that, like. We can stop them in here somehow. I just think it's good to have that. Opportunity to keep, to try to keep peace in the community by making sure that everybody can voice their. Their needs.
I appreciate that perspective, that maybe it's us going through the standards and saying which ones of these standards of, of these sections. Really warrant having something in there that allows that conversation versus six A one, which is a much broader. Blanket.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, yeah, it probably, the density probably doesn't belong in there, because there's plenty of things to talk about density.
Yeah.
Definitely isn't, but like visual compatibility and I don't know. But I like that it's not.
Yeah.
Not so.
No, I.
Delineated by the rules, because I, I think that's important to have an opportunity for those conversations.
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate that in the same way that I've always appreciated that in here, in this town, the parking standards are so vague. And it really does, it should theoretically gives the ability to come in and say, here is all the evidence.
Efficient off-street parking.
Right, but now what I'm, I think, well, I've sort of revised my position on that a little bit. I think we ought to start working toward having some. Guidance, and but the problem is where, where guidance we do is like now you have to have this. There's almost no room for flexibility, but we, we would have to add some provision in there, like here are the standards and unless you can. Work with the planning board to say why, you know? But everybody has a different perspective on what's, what's too much, where we are with um. You know, not having enough parking or having too much parking, you know?
It, half of the people are going to tell you discourage parking, that discourages the use of cars, and the others say. It's impossible, I can't find a parking space for.
I would argue that. Not having a bit of a parking problem in your village, in your commercial areas is a good thing. Because it means that there are actual people here doing the things that you want them to do. In the village, but it's. The challenge of um, you know, we want to encourage, you know, businesses on the first floor. And residential uses and other things on second, third stories, because that's good planning for your community, but you still have to have places for those people to go. To park, because everybody's going to have a car, I think, yeah. So I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's something we all, we need to work through that. We probably won't fix it all this year, but I do, I would put the plug in that. As we're even, maybe even thinking about it through the comprehensive process, like let's not get into dimensional standards of parking, but like, let's think it sexually about where. You know, it's important to have.
The role of the automobile in our future.
Yeah, but you can't get away from it here.
Right. Yeah.
Going around it, but you should be able to like have some provisions where you could do some shared parking and like recognize that there's a lot. Of this, up a hill here that's never, oh, more than like two months out of the year. And, you know, why not take advantage of this? Lots of talk, I hope you guys get more involved, because I think you. I think the, the genesis of the Luso committee was when we first started it. That the board was just inundated with applications and there was no time to do. Planning, and so we had a Luso committee, and I think it's an important group, but I would benefit much more from the perspective. Table having actually sat through. Like some of these things and having to make decisions and getting information from professionals about. You know, projects that the people on the Luso committee would, I think, benefit from.
Yeah, I'd like to see the planning board on the planning side of the table a little bit more other than just the process.
Right, and I've mentioned before, I hate coming to the planning board after we've spent months going over. Back with, you know, Luso changes, and then have you guys be like, ah, what's up, you know, like you bring a good perspective to it, then it would be great to have it earlier. In the process, so. I don't know if we're going to get away from the Luso committee, but we just need to do a better job of like bringing time, bringing them perspectives together. Plus, I mean, you guys are the people twice a month, so your agendas could be pretty full, so it's not like you're less busy.
I have people ask me. I don't know, now and then, why we don't have a sound ordinance?
Yeah.
Is that?
Like a noise ordinance?
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, ah, yeah, we talked about it a few times and it just.
Done it so much.
Couple times, you know, so like, and they're not interested in it.
Yeah.
Listen, the board of selectmen aren't interested in it.
The lobster boats. You'd have a problem, wouldn't be able to.
Construction.
Lobster boats.
Well, it is, it's construction, like telling. That's what I have people mention to me is like, why, why can't we tell them that they can't start before? At least seven in the morning. I mean, people are showing up to job sites at six thirty in the morning and starting to make noise and just kind of like, well, it's just inconsiderate.
Seasons are so short.
I mean, what I've done, and the other side of the fence is just saying, look. You, you know, you talk to the client, like we have, you can't, you've got to make sure that in the contractor, we've had, 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 had those conversations where. You know, but I do appreciate that your construction season is so short. And the time to get like a lot of stuff done is the same time where everybody wants to be here, so we gotta find a balance, I guess.
I just want, so I just want to put a pin in the fact that. At least at this point, I uphold the same opinion as. Meredith does about the role of a planning board and making people happy. Um, not that I want people to be mad, but the point, based on what the planning board does. But, I mean, I was kind of, I'm actually kind of uncomfortable that we just, somebody called in and said, I'd like to have a bunch of trees planted. A bunch of screening planted there, and we just made it a condition with a permit, even though. I mean, when I was there today, I saw that that land rises up and then there's, there's. Buildings up like high and beyond it, and there's nothing wrong with expecting that there's going to be appropriate screening, but for us to make it. A condition just because somebody asked for it, I. Was a little, it's fine, because you, you're, you're, you want to be good neighbors anyway, but. I think it would be better to be a little more careful about how we start imposing requirements that aren't in. The Luso. Um, it's our, that's what we do here, we interpret the Luso, and I don't think it should be any vaguer than. Than it has to be in order for us to do our job, or that we, or that the planning board counter should freestyle about what. About things, particularly if they have a potential to sort of conflict with or rub up against specific standards that are already in the, in the Luso. But I have a lot to learn, so it might be that my feelings about that modify.
Yeah, I mean, no, I, uh, my ideal world would be that, uh, we're theoretically, when you get to the application process, like when we're here before you. And, and you can attest to this too, Bill, like, you know, you've already gone through the whole. Then like you pretty much know, you should really know what you're. Going to be, you're, you're applying for, like it, you know, there's no reason to be denied. There should be no reason to be denied when you get to the point of actually. Applying for something because you're following, the rules need to be set up so that an applicant could just sort of click through them. So my ideal world is always. You know, you've done the work as a town ahead of time to decide, these are the rules you want people to follow. And so there should be no question about those rules, because you've already done it. Doesn't mean you can't, you know, go back and revise rules or, but there's always going to be on the, that's, so that's me as my idealized world, but in reality. There's always going to be like a different interpretation of certain things that we gotta. Go there, and that's why I'm saying like to get to, to balance between your point and Meredith's point, is there's probably some standards where. It makes sense to be able to have a conversation. And I will say also, as an applicant. That's why the subdivision process is so interesting, because the sketch plan is actually really helpful, not just because. Uh, we get a chance to talk to the board, but you actually get a chance sometimes to hear from other people that, you know, you don't necessarily reach out. It's not like uh always in the developer's mind to spend money to go do public process prior to this setting. And I, I like, sometimes it's nice to hear like, oh, I never, actually, when that woman brought that up, tonight, I, I was like. I never even.
Never even considered it. It's funny how you measure those things, because I can totally hear, I totally hear Gail's point that like, if we had. You know, the woman asking that and the applicant was just one hundred percent ad against it, and it was creating friction. And we didn't have any hard anything in the ordinance to point at, yeah, we'd probably take a. Different line on that, but where the applicants were, yeah, sure, that's actually a pretty good idea, let's do that, we love planting stuff. Okay, let's, let's take that line, and I think about like the, the quarry in those eight years and that. Two-sentence noise section we spent.
And that's the problem, like the, the quarry was the whole issue is noise, and we've got like two lines.
Two sentences, and you've got everybody wound up around it, you've got nothing to aim at and. You know.
Well, I guess I would just say about the planting, it's fine as long as. I don't know what this person's expectations are with respect to what you're going to plan, or, so I presume you're going to be able to work it out, but you could easily put. People in a position where ain't nobody going to be happy. With, and then we've, but we've made it a condition, even though it's not really, and then, and then what do you do?
Yeah.
Um, then how do you deal with that? Because we added this.
We've had that before.
And that fence that runs along the harbor.
In the harbor.
We asked them to plant, plants in front of the fence, and they kind of did a half-assed job of it and half of them died.
Yeah, we said, we said the species, we said the height, we said the spacing, you know, and, and it still didn't.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
And we had to bring them back in here and say, hey.
And they replanted more.
And they did.
Yeah.
They did.
And that's probably the adequate screening standard or something like that, where you were able to actually have that conversation with somebody, to make a determination about what.
Yeah.
I mean, just generally speaking, there are never going to be enough rules for every, you, it, it's an eternal. That there will always be new situations that come up that just respond to. I mean, I'm familiar with the Somerville landing, right? And they started out with a very loose, unwritten set of responsibilities, and every year. Somebody comes down there and does something different, you know, well, we'll bring a hibachi down and we'll have a barbecue down there, and suddenly the, the, the. Board has to have a meeting at the meeting ban. You know, hibachi, so that's, that happens, and that's how, that's the nature of. Human behavior and the edges of things, so you're never going to get a zoning one that's the.
Yeah, it's.
Covers, everything is a constant process.
It is a living document.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think, but I, I think, I mean, I've worked in a bunch of different towns, and I know you have, Bill, but. I, I find that is a town that it seems like there's always some other weird thing that just pops up and you're like, what in the heck? I don't even know, I don't think your ordinances are that bad. They're really pretty easy to follow. And it's just always something that seems to pop up. I don't know how, we have a list every year, it's like pretty, we've been working on it forever. I don't think like repealing, replacing with something new is going to solve that, I just something about, you know. The level of projects that.
That floodplain thing with the roof.
Yeah, which is now fixed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fixed.
I mean, you've looked at model ordinances out there, and there's nothing so spectacular that we should.
I mean, we, I, my philosophy is I bring in stand, you know, we're not rewriting. A lot of times, it's not like we're just coming up with things from scratch.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, but I don't, I don't, we've talked about this for a few years, like, is there a repeal and replace? Option for your land use ordinance, and I just don't.
They always do, but.
Uh, you know, the thing that I might, we might need to work on.
We don't feel like that, we had them pre-done.
But I. The table level auditions does create some problems, and it may be that we want to start to think about, let's just take some time. You know, over the next year and review the table of the lab uses and like rejigger it a little bit more instead of being like broken down by.
Yeah.
The way it is, you just have to have, like, there. It's, there's a couple of different approaches, but we want to be. Maybe comprehensive, and then everything that's not in there just isn't allowed, you know, you want to bring it in.
And that's a good metric for some of the weirdness in town, and how many times we've had. Applicants come to us and say, what are we?
Right.
You know?
That's because of this weird breakdown, like why, it doesn't lie, I don't, I still can't figure out why it's broken down into these categories, it's so weird, but you should, I think there's a way to. Keep the use, we should just redo the table, make it.
Sure, sure, can we just make um like nonprofits under the same category as commercial? I don't see why we wouldn't. I mean, when they were arguing about the other day, I'm like, you take money in, you pay money out, you're.
Uh, or.
The profit motive is the only difference I've had in that.
It's a services three, no matter how you look at it.
Right, right.
It doesn't matter if you're making money off it or not.
Right, right.
This is what you're doing there, great, you don't have to make that distinction, but that's what the ordinance says, is like.
Because it says commercial, right, right. And, and so we should just have a note in there of commercial slash nonprofit. Because if people are going to argue because they don't have it, they're not for profit, they're not commercial.
So we're consistently working on trying to keep this less wordy than Bar Harbor. I vote, I'm, I have discussions on the loop like the meeting. Can you attest this, where I'm like, look. Sometimes having more words in your ordinance actually makes it a better ordinance than having less words, so I know you want, we want to keep it thin. And manageable, but it also needs to be a little more. Sometimes it needs to have a little more words, just to make it workable. So, yeah, there's always stuff to do. But my pitch is, if we can start doing more planning as a planning board. Somehow in, in sort of conjunction with the Luso committee, I think we'll be better off. And also, everybody needs to volunteer for the cop plan update. That's my, that's my pitch.
That's, that's the. Oh, okay.
Did you get any?
I haven't heard anything yet, but I'm gonna send an email tomorrow to everybody who was at that meeting.
So why, why was that not available by Zoom?
Uh, we never set it up by Zoom, I don't know why.
Because I was like, oh, I'll, I'll just check it out on Zoom, and then at six o'clock, I was like, oh, we're still on, and. Oh, you can't log in? I feel the match.
I was here, had to sign papers. But that'll be an important thing, I think, uh, yeah, there's a few kind of really interesting things in this town. That I think the cop plan is the form we're trying to figure out. Yeah.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Well, we got two, two other, other things really quick, is one, I've. Claire gave me the ethics.
Oh, yeah.
Thing we have to all. Thing we have to all sign, and of course I didn't. Code of ethics, I didn't bring it with me tonight, of course, but just next time, under other, we've got that. So we, I, I think we all have to do it together, something like that.
Well, I have to get sworn, I, I recently signed it when I, I have to get sworn in again as permanent member and I have to sign it again, so. Then then.
Yeah, so.
And I assume, I've asked the Luso board actually, so.
It's like I signed it about a dozen times before.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think once it gets up and running, it'll be fine.
Yeah, once we, you know, we got to the. Thanks, Noel, the humble ass one.
Uh, Noel.
Yes.
Got you.
Yeah, I'm taking mine away too.
Want me to?
And then, and then we'll take you.
You sure you don't want to keep it for the bookshelf?
Next meeting.
Probably.
What's your other?
That's right.
Do you wanna summarize the email from Andy or? You want me to, I can.
You can.
Yeah, so Andy, everybody read the email about Andy. They didn't. We, right, we just got it, sorry.
It's about the ending three sixty-five.
Yeah, it's just Andy summarizing where's, where he's at in writing the final findings. And we're still on board for the thirteenth and a large show.
Yeah.
And he's got thirty-one pages drafted so far.
The thirteenth of November or December? Oh, okay, I, I just, oh, the, the workforce, oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, that he's made excellent prog- progress with the draft and the planning board decisions and findings.
So why, I don't understand, what I've never, what I have, we've never heard of, because.
Because this is probably gonna be appealed.
Yeah.
And you probably have a very mean, entirely comprehensive record. I'm not gonna bother read all this.
I thought we went through this with the quarry, you know, the.
Did go through.
We did.
Had one.
Like those.
Yeah, it's the findings and facts and conclusions and laws, all of section six A, sixty, sixty, then the statutes that you all went through.
Yeah.
And he's putting them all together, you know, but having. Also including the ordinances, all the ordinances and the sections you've reviewed as part of the timings and facts and conclusions of law. It's gonna be thirty-seven pages.
Though in the court gets it, they have a document ready that sets it all for.
Yeah. And Andy.
He says he's gonna try to get it to you a week before the thirteenth, so you can review it, I think he said it in us, cause I read it while Noel was talking.
We, we just approved the minutes tonight at the eighteen, he's awaiting.
Twenty-four.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Five hours.
I know.
So.
Mm-hmm.
There's Andy's nudge to Heidi.
Yes. I, I have started them, yes, so I worked on them today.
You know, and he's just talking about process, you know, like we had our, our finding on approval of the application on the. Twenty-fourth, but you know, it's not official until we adopt the findings on the thirteenth. And the vote on the thirteenth is the adoption of the findings, it's not quite an approval vote, um.
My question.
What?
You will not have received the minutes of the twenty-fifth. By that.
Twenty-four.
Received them by the, but you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have approved them by that time, and then we also have findings. You're facing these findings on the minutes.
Where you can treat them at that meeting, right?
Oh, yeah, it is a meeting, but it's, it's gonna be.
Maybe they can, could they get approval at the November twenty-ninth workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I put them on, if you have, if you have a bite, please, eight.
I can try.
If you get it done by.
I will try for the twenty-nine.
Andy's gonna need them sooner than that.
It's a five-hour meeting, after a three-hour meeting.
The same, he's gonna need them sooner than that to do the filing.
Yeah, and that means everything else, the last two meetings we have, or one after like. That gets them done.
That'd be okay with me, yeah, take them out of order.
Yeah.
Well, like you say, if you get them done for whatever, for the twenty-ninth.
I'll do my best to get them for the twenty.
Then the board does approve them at the twenty.
You guys were all gonna be at that meeting, that would be a good place, and you're gonna advertise that, right? Do I need to be at that meeting, Kimberly?
It'd be nice if you were there, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'll shoot for the twenty-nine, I make no promises. Never had a meeting that long. Been in the Bar Harbor territory.
I still feel it.
Me too. Feel like I've never left this room. If this wasn't accessible, could we do it elsewhere? Like the library, we've done bloodboard in the Mellon Room.
Yeah, but I was at the Bellonai Zone.
Don't believe it was.
I always have to let you know, I'm gonna do it for another day if it doesn't work.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's only other, other I had.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sure.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Yeah, raise your hand.